I'm the president of United Walnut Taxpayers and with me here is Sharon Wu, president of the Chinese American Association of Walnut. On behalf of both of our organizations, we'd like to welcome you to the City of Walnut Council Forum, Candidates Forum. We had a really good, exciting one for Mount SAC and I hope this one will be just as good. Sharon will review some of the logistics and we'll move on.
So for those of you who just came in, we did a media session and it will work in the same format. We will only take questions in written form, so we have a few monitors with the index cards and pen that's coming around. So if you want to fill out questions, wave them down and grab a pen and a card. And they will also come around and collect them. So when you're done writing, just raise your card up and then go collect. So we can see a few more come in. And of course, we definitely want to thank all of our council candidates for stepping up and trying for office and to serve our community. So we want to make sure that we ask questions are, you know, in a respectful way and that concerns our community, but at the same time, we want to refrain from any personal questions or any questions that would be seen as an attack. So thank you very much for coming and I'm going to turn over.
I forgot to mention, as you can see, we have two of the candidates who are not present here with us. On behalf of Mr. Bob Pacheco, his wife Gail will be here, reading the opening statement and then she will leave the stage and we will have the other two candidates. Unfortunately, the fourth candidate did have to cancel out today. I would like to introduce Mr. Anthony Duarte, he's the president of the Regional Chamber of Commerce for San Gabriel and he's our moderator tonight.
Well, good evening, everyone. She mentioned that my name's Anthony Duarte, I'm the CEO of the Regional Chamber of Commerce in San Gabriel Valley. For those of you who aren't familiar with the Regional Chamber of Commerce, we cover the communities of Diamond Bar, Rowan Heights, Casilla Heights, Savocado Heights, Bassett, Belinda La Puente, and right here in the beautiful city of Walnut. So thank you all for being with us here tonight on a Friday night. We are going to go ahead and start off with Ms. Pacheco, who's going to say a few words and read a statement from Ms. Pacheco.
First of all, I'd like to thank the Chinese, the American Association and the United Walnut. Can you hear me okay? I was sitting in the back before and I wasn't able to hear too well. I hope you can hear me. But I'll let you know that Bob is in the hospital. He had a minor procedure that they haven't actually had an incision for. So he is in the hospital, but he's doing fine. I just heard from him and he sent everyone his wishes, but they graciously allowed me to read his statement. So he says he'll be back for the next candidate forum, which I think is on the 29th. Anyway, this is Bob. Thank you. "Many of you know me well. I've served Walnut for over 23 years as a state assemblyman, your mayor and city councilman. I've dedicated myself to our beautiful city and citizens, giving of my time and energy and working tires, laid to continue to improve our community. We all enjoy many of the things I've been successful in establishing: the senior center, the teen center, the gymnasium, the lighted basketball courts at Butterfield Park and Walnut High School, the newly installed LED lights that brighten our streets and the recently revised general plan. I led the charge to accomplish all these things. Your safety has been and continues to be my primary concern and top priority. I've urged and approved increased budgeting for community patrol services by the Walnut Sheriff's Department. Maintaining our beautiful open spaces is critical. We currently have a yearly deficit in covering those costs of maintenance of our open space and lighting districts. That is a critical budget problem which I have been working on and I intend to continue to address in the coming years. Building an aquatic center along with additional community meeting rooms is important in order to provide facilities for our seniors, adults and children to enjoy. We must be able to budget for those expenditures. I will be working hard to accomplish that. I played a critical role after years of litigation in finally resolving our disputes with Mount SAC. Moving forward, I intend to work hard in order to restore our relationship with Mount SAC while bringing watchful with more community participation input into Mount SAC's plans for future expansion. Many of you have the opportunity to enjoy the beautiful musical performances of the Walnut Valley Symphony Orchestra and Master Chorale, which I created. Helping our kids and teachers is equally important to me. As president of the Walnut Valley Educational Foundation, I've helped raise over a million dollars to support our teachers and provide scholarships for our students. Our 22nd Annual Teddy Bear Tea is coming up on November 3rd, where we will raise additional funds for classroom mini grounds. Moving forward, I plan to dedicate myself to serving Walnut with the same energy and dedication I've always had by balancing our budget, increasing sales tax revenue and revitalizing our commercial corridors. The city needs the experience and dedicated leadership I provide in order to accomplish those tasks. I respectfully ask for your vote and your support on my reelection to the Walnut City Council, so I can continue to work for you and our city. Together, we will keep Walnut one of the best small cities in the country in which to live and raise our children. Thank you, Councilmember Bob Pacheco."
Thank you, Gail. So each candidate's going to have two minutes for their opening statements. We have several questions already in front of me. You'll have one minute to respond and then at the end, there'll be one minute closing remarks. I apologize to the audience already. We have a very lively audience and has lots of questions and we weren't able to get to all the questions during the Mount San Antonio College Forum. I hope we can get through several, most of the questions because now we're done and two candidates here. But if I'm unable to get to all the questions, I do apologize in advance. We're trying to get to as many of them as possible. So with that, we'll turn over to Mr. Wu.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Alan Wu. I graduated from USC. I got my PhD degree in civil engineering and also the public administration, a master degree, and also the environmental engineering master degree. I have my PE license, Civil Engineer California, and also I'm the superior court appointed water master. Currently, I'm work for the, not work for, I'm on the board for one of our many water districts. Starting from 1989, me and my family, we moved in here over 30 years. And we have three kids grew up and got education here, locals coming from the kindergarten, elementary school and all the way. Right now, they are, they are, they are adults right now. And 2000 year, 2000, I joined CAW. 2001, I become a VP of CAW. And 2002, I got appointed by Tom King, the council member Tom King, the commissioner of the tile recreation for two years. 2003, I got elected to be a water board member and 2007, got re-elected to water board member. And for the community issue, I participated, starting from three of State of the Pacific and NFL and also the Mount SAC issue and some other community issue, including those of kids got attacked at the high school in 2003. I remember we had a couple of the parents here, we mobilized 300 parents. We went to the sheriff's station and then we fought. We fought for the right, for the justice to send the criminal to the court. Well, I think my point is that. Thank you.
My name is Carrie Mason and I'm running for Walnut City Council. Thank you to the United Walnut Taxpayers and to the Chinese Association of Walnut and to Anthony Duarte for moderating tonight the Regional Chamber of Commerce. As an active parent and educator, I've worked to improve the quality of the lives of all citizens in Walnut. When my daughter Katie was at Walnut Unified, I dedicated countless hours, both inside and outside the classroom, to help make those schools as great as they could be. Now I'd like to dedicate my time to Walnut to keep it as one of the best cities to live in in the United States. When I was asked to run for a city council, the first thing I, the first thing I did is I talked to my family and, as crazy as it sounds, they thought it was a good idea. And then I looked at the city budget and I noticed that we're looking at increasing deficit spending in the next four years. I was very surprised to see this because I thought everything was fine in Walnut. When I go door to door, I talk to people and they think everything's fine too. For those people who are in the audience and watching at home on video, I want to let you know that there is no plan for a sustainable Walnut at this time. The city has been balancing its budget using one-time developer fees as needed. It's not sustainable, but the good news is that we have a hefty reserves we can work on. I'll continue this further. Thank you.
All right. So the first question, please share your involvements with the city, with the Walnut community for the past several years and what are some of the biggest contributions that you've made to the community? Start now.
Well, I, I just mentioned I started 2000, starting with CAW and then Water Board and some other community involvement. The biggest one, I would say 2009, when the water district, they, they come out with their theory, which, which is not fair to all the repairer. I informed the city residents, Warner City resident and all the district resident and the repairer to go for the water district to let them know, because that time it was on the part 218 process. And let them know, we, it's not a fair waterway and we against the waterway. I mean, some of here, people, some of the resident, audience here, and you participate the protection and we came out with very, very strong voice to let the water district know, to let the administrator, government administrator know, people, they care, resident, they care, not just what they can do, they can control everything. There's no superpower on the water board, same thing. I wish there's no superpower in the city council. Thank you.
Is this working? My experience as it relates to the city is in my involvement with the coordinating council of Walnut, Walnut Valley Unified School District. It was here that I learned of the power of a great organizational scheme. Not all districts are like Walnut Valley. There's a reason it's the best. It has amazing communication between the district and the parents. It's, what have, basically in a nutshell, what it is is, as a community club mom, I show up to my community club meetings and we find out the concerns of the community club and then we go to the district and we share our concerns and they share their concerns with us. That's really unusual and unique. We need that kind of communication with our city. The city of Walnut needs to have perhaps more than a forum, perhaps a commission, like a public safety commission or an economic commission, where citizens can raise their concerns to the city and vice versa and we can work together for a solution. Thank you.
This time we'll start with Miss Mason. What is your position on the proposed community center or aquatic center?
When I first learned of the need for an aquatic center, a community center, I was going door to door. And I'd heard of it before. I was aware that there was, that it was out there, but I didn't realize that it was something that our residents need. We currently have a Walnut swim team that doesn't have a place to swim. They just kind of try to go where they can. And at the Walnut Senior Center, they say that they could really use an aquatic program or a pool for aquatics, for our population, to keep our population healthy. That's a great way to exercise. At this time, we're looking at increasing deficit spending, but I do think that we can use our position as a leader in educating our outside community. Right now, we're educating kids outside our district and we just passed $150 million bond to do it. What are we getting back from the county? We need to work with our county to get more than the million dollars they promised.
Mr. Wu?
One of the things we got to understand, City of Walnut, we are contracting. We contract everything out. When I look at the planning, the conceptual design, I look, there's a $15 million for their construction cost and there's a $7.2 million for their soft cost, that's including their design and construction management. In Walnut District, we don't do that kind of things. That's more than, more than 60% versus the construction cost. That's the way we need to save money. Not only get the revenue, we need to save money as a, me as a city council member, the first thing, we need to save money for everywhere. I mean, contract, are we contracting with the sheriff? Are we doing the efficient job? Are they doing the efficient job or we doing the efficient job now? How about the public works? How about every single contract engineering? I mean, engineering, they do their plant check, they doing the service, they just spend all the money out. We got nothing. And why is it so expensive? Same thing, but this one, I, I believe we should have the accountable meeting to get all the people's input, communicate with all the resident or citizen, what you really want. If we really want to build this one, are we, we consider the maintenance costs and other costs, what about the contract? I mean, in the future, what kind of problem?
Thank you, Mr. Wu. The housing market is extremely expensive in Walnut, making it difficult for many young families to buy a home in Walnut. What policies would you support that would make housing more accessible for younger families to call the City of Walnut home? Mr. Wu?
Well, as the, the city council member, I don't think we can come out with a policy to lower down the price, but one thing is we can, we can provide, we can provide more housing, but how? I'm not go for, I'm not for the low income housing here. I mean, we need to maintain our label here in City of Walnut. But one way we need to think about the, when I, because I live here 30 years, we have pioneer and pioneer generation here. They were here since 1950, 1960. And we, they are part of the art history. We respect them. They, they want the environment more safe, more, more beautiful and, but the generation, I mean, our middle-aged generation, I'm, well, with middle-aged generation, we just keep on working, keep on working and make money and then feed the family. Sounds like we don't have anything, but look at the younger generation, younger generation, they need, they need, they need the housing right here, but how we can provide the housing is very important.
Thank you, Mr. Wu. Mason.
I wish I could give more hope for young families who want to move into Walnut. The only thing I can say is, again, a really good job so you could afford a house here.
All right, this goes to you, Ms. Mason. How or what would you propose to enhance and revitalize the business districts in the City of Walnut to help increase sales tax revenue?
That's the question of the day. There are a few things that we can do to increase our sales tax revenue. Last year, the City of Walnut raised $2 million in sales tax revenue from all our, for the entire year. And when I mentioned before that we're looking at increased deficit spending, it's not a huge amount. We're looking at half a million at first and then up to a million. It's something that we really could fix if we simply shopped in Walnut more. Our mayor pro tem, Andrew Rodriguez, is hosting, with Next Gen, is hosting a get-together here in Walnut. It's on Alvinson, it's on Amar and, okay, it's where the 24-hour fitness center is, in Walnut. Shop in Walnut, that's to bring attention to the need that we really need to focus on our businesses here. It doesn't matter how many new developments we build, our, our building density is not going to cause our sales tax revenue to go up. We actually have to shop in Walnut to show businesses outside Walnut that we will create purchasing power, that we will support local businesses.
Thank you.
The only way businesses are going to come here is if they feel that we'll support them.
Mr. Wu?
We have, City of Walnut, we have $2.2 million sales tax income every year, roughly. When I, I did my calculation, roughly, if we invite 100 to 150 stores, we will get, we will get $1 million income, sales tax income. But 100 stores, 150 stores for $1 million, where are we going to put this store? We still have a space, we still have a vacant space, but the thing is, we need to go out to, we're sorry state and encouraging the vendor, the chain store, they come in, but probably not a big one, because big one, it will cause a lot of problems, like environmental impact, that kind of problem. So I would say incentive to the resident and the people living around the city to invite them or encourage them to come here to, to consume, to pay the sales tax, that's one way. The other way is the, we probably need to, we need to have a little bit more space for the, for the retail store, but looks like we don't have space here in the City of Walnut.
Thank you. All right, this starts with you, Mr. Wu. Do you support or oppose Mount San Antonio College measure go? Why or why not?
I believe some people, they're against this one, some people think for this one. And I, my position, I'm not, I'm not the, I'm not the, it's not city's tradition to make that kind, that kind of position, but the thing is, we not only the people vote for the, for this measure. That's, that's my, my.
Thank you.
I work at Mount SAC. My husband works at Mount SAC. We have members of the audience who work at Mount SAC. Mount SAC is a really great school and there's no doubt in my mind that Mount San Antonio College needs the money, but it's complicated. Because of recent decisions that Mount SAC made regarding the development of the parking structure and the solar farm, I don't feel comfortable at this time supporting a bond when we need to build our relationship with Mount San Antonio College at this time. My position is, we need to build our relationship with the college and then we can move forward from there.
Thank you. This starts with you, Ms. Mason. Do you support or oppose short-term rentals like Airbnb in Walnut?
It depends on the short-term rental. You know, if it's illegal, if it's legal, then, then, I know people who are involved in that and if it's done, I guess, if it's done well, I guess, this is a tough question because there are some things that, sometimes it's just done illegally. Sometimes it brings illegal activity to our city, but I also feel that people have the right to earn an honest living. So my position on this is, if it's legal, then yes. If it's illegal, then no.
Mr. Wu?
Yeah, very clear for me, no. It's going to impact the neighborhood. Think about the traffic, think about the people they brought in, what kind of people they're going to, they're going to bring in. Are they going to their home party? They're going to bring, they're going to rent it one day for 300 people here and they have a party right next to your house? No, sorry.
All right, I believe this goes to you, Mr. Wu. Why can't Warner City Hall be open five days a week?
Well, I agree whoever asks this question. If I enough, enough goal, I would suggest 980. I think most of you know 980's schedule. We have 440's schedule right now, but before, a long time ago, at the beginning, the issue, I mean, why they changed to 440 is because of, because I, I mean, I was, I was part of innovation, issue, people ask this question, I say, why four days? Why not five days? I mean, five day, they say the electricity energy, we can save some of the energy. Well, I would support 980 or four, or 540.
Thank you.
Can I ask what 980 is?
980, 980 is like two weeks, you work 80 hours and then every, every working day, you work nine hours times nine. Is that nine? It's the, the two weeks, you take one day off. This is a 980. Nine days, 80 hours. Yeah. It's because I, I, I've been deal with 15 years with water district, so I have the experience to handling the property agency. So to me, easy on the job.
Ms. Mason, go ahead.
Well, as a teacher, I'm very well-versed in taking good ideas. If that turns out to be a good idea, let's do it.
Ms. Mason, this goes to you. Will you commit to creating a public safety commission, an economic development commission comprised of citizens to advise the city council on?
That sounds like a page from my website. I think that's a brilliant idea. I think right now, we need citizen, we need citizens to be leading the direction on this. If we do need to make budget cuts, if we do need to make cuts that would be difficult for the city to make, it's important that we have a residence group that actually looks at how we're spending our money to be sustainable. I would change that from economic development commission to, to a sustainability, economic sustainability commission. You know, we're not looking at just how we can raise income, raise revenue. We're also looking, we should, we need to be looking at, where are we spending our money? Are we doing this, are we doing this right? And as far as a public safety commission, we have a crisis. We're in And as far as a Public Safety Commission, we have a crisis, we're in crisis. It's not just the City of Walnut, it's the entire state of California due to the new legislation. And we have a lot of residents who are very concerned and involved. We need to bring them in. We need to bring them in to help form this Public Safety and Economic Sustainability Commission.
Thank you. Question number?
Sure.
Will you commit to creating a Public Safety Commission and Economic Development Commission comprised of citizens to advise the City Council?
So as to a commission, committee involved, I would say yes, for the, yes, to the Public Safety Committee or Commission. That will get all people's attention to how improve the safety issue. A safety issue is not only, not only for the committee. We also need to have a neighborhood watch. We also need to, need to, need to watch the crime, the gang, the gangster, the mafia, I mean, in the city, and starting from the, and also the gangsters starting from the, from the school. Because it doesn't matter what race of the gangster, the school, they're always there. We need to prevent how the crime happen. And also, there's a homelessness issue in our city. We also need to take care of that kind of problem. I mean, I would suggest we have a, we have a curfew in some of the area. It's not, because some of the businesses, they're not, they're not for 24 hours. And but, for the Economy Development Committee, yes, we need to have that to invite more business to come to our city to do the legal business only.
Thank you. What would you like to see changed in the City of Walnut? Mr. Wu?
The change, well, since we have three generations here, we have a pioneer generation here, and and we have mid-age generation, and also next generation, the young generation here. The young gen, I, I heard a lot of demand from the young generation, they want to change. They want, they, they, they say, they've been live here 30 years, 20-some years, they feel bored, everything the same. But I told them, whatever you're going to change, it's not going to immediately, it will be changed. It will, whatever you want to change, it probably will take 15 or 20 years to see it happen. Maybe gradually, gradually change, it's okay. Because, to me, maybe another 34, I mean, another 15 years, I'll be retired. And then another 30 years, probably, it's going to time for handover to the next generation. So, I would say, the change to some of the area, like the boundary or, or it's not the residential area, probably that can be gradually, gradually changed to satisfy the young generation.
Thank you.
I have my can-do, will-do list and my wish list. And the changes from the can-do are simply, for Public Safety, add cameras, where the Sheriff's Department recommends it. These aren't the kind of cameras that will, you know, watch your every movement. It's just, it's the, a camera strategically placed to catch license plates if there's a crime that was committed, and then, and then they would be looked at from that perspective, but only if there was a crime committed, and there was a reason to look at it, and then it would be taped over the very next day. Also, we have traffic. We have traffic on Grand, and we have traffic on Lemon, and we have traffic on Valley. Separate, different areas, but we need to hold our private engineering company accountable. We pay them to do it, we need to have them time our lights effectively, or perhaps do traffic studies now that we have, now that Lemon's something different, with the on-ramp, with the on-ramp. And the last is a view protection ordinance, so people can't block your view with development or neglect. Thank you.
Thank you. This starts with you, Ms. Mason. How much have you raised and spent on your City Council campaign? And who are some of your major funders?
I have raised about 3,500, and it is, people have come to various fundraisers, and I got one large donation from a gentleman who plans to retire here, who owns, who owns a development firm, or who is a development. And, and what was the last question? I'm sorry? Okay, great.
I raised, so far, I raised $34,000, and most of them is from the Walnut City Council. I would say 75, 75 to 80% from the Walnut City Council. I don't remember the name, because this is some, this is some, they didn't make $1,000. And I spent over $10,000. Right, for the mailer, the sign, and also the, some of the, also the fundraiser cost, and the meeting cost, and the posting, mailing expense.
Thank you. If elected to the Walnut City Council, what would you do to help reduce crime in the City of Walnut?
First one, I would, I would agree with CCTV camera. But CCTV camera, I need someone to monitor and watch. That probably, that would be another expense. And the second one would be Public Safety Committee or Commission. Before, we used to have that. I believe that one is very efficient. And the third one is the, we probably need to look into the contract we have with the sheriff, see how we can, how we can increase the sheriff on the, on the street. And the number five is the, like I say, is school. We probably need to preventing the crime from the school, gangster or mafia, doesn't matter, any kind of race. And also, for the, for the newcomer, the new resident, we need to provide them the new resident information, a package. Tell them, it's not only the cuba, we need to tell them, don't, don't, for example, don't park your Mercedes or Rolls Royce on the street, and then put a note in the car, say, say, missing dog, missing cat, and tell people that this car is your junk car on the street. We need to tell the new residents, I mean, cover your fancy items, don't miss both. And then, uh,
As far as Public Safety goes, I've addressed a little bit of that already with the cameras and the Public Safety Commission. At this point, I, I do agree, there's a lot that we can do as individuals, and that's part of the neighborhood watches that, that we go to in our communities. At this point, we really need to develop a best practices. You know, I can say, oh, I think we should do this, or I think we should do that. But the fact is, is that, that we need to be looking at what other cities are doing, and pick the best practices that will work for our city. And that does include holding the Sheriff's Department accountable. I can't tell you how many people I've talked to that have had experiences that are less than satisfactory with our Sheriff's Department, but we need to work on that relationship too.
Thank you. This begins with you, Ms. Mason. Do you support green energy in the City of Walnut? And how would you promote green energy in the City of Walnut?
When I first was looking at, you know, what I was going to propose, what we know that I thought people would be interested in, I was looking at ways that we can be conscientious of our place in the planet, and looking at ways that we can save money also. And one of those ways is saving water, and other ways is, in another ways, saving energy costs. I think that although many people don't like the look of solar, I think solar panels on top of parking lots, like what Walnut Valley is currently doing, is a good way to provide shade, and we just have to be careful about the agreement we get in with the particular solar company.
Let me start from the water first. I believe our city will not 100% recycle, recycle water here. I will, once I'm on the City Council, I will push not 100%, because it's not going to be 100%. For example, this facility here, we can only use portable water. But our facility, outdoor facility like Park, like outdoor facility, Walnut Valley already provide almost 100% of the outdoor recycle water. Recycle water is cheaper, it's more, because recycle, it's reused. But the two area, they are not, Timberland area, it's good as day water. They, they are the most expensive water in the city, and they not, they not, they don't have any recycle water. The other area is in Chrisapp Park, Chrisapp Park, they have, they have 11% of the recycle water, but they are not, but they are very expensive, even the recycle water is very expensive. So, through the communication, I will, I would say, city need to move ahead to communicate with the other water company to make recycle water happen. That's for the water for the.
Sorry, that's timing. How do you, Ms. Mason? How can you improve communication between the City of Walnut and Mount San Antonio College?
I would, I would suggest to come out with the Committee or Commission, and both agency to sit together periodically, meeting, like Walnut District we have. We always, we have, we have a Committee or Commission with the Neighborhood Water District, and also the City of Industry, and also the Pomona City. Communication, only communication can resolve the problem. If go through the lawsuit, take a look, how much money we spend on the lawsuit? Starting from the three of, we spend, we approve the development, and then, then along, there's an environmental issue, we can't, we can't hang in there, and then the developer sends us to the court. How much, how much money we spend, and what kind of right, what kind of benefit we got? We got nothing. Same thing, Zen Center, we spend $900,000. We spend $900,000 for the settlement, and $100,000 for the attorney fee. Are we talking about, are we going to balance up our budget? Are we, we need more revenue or something? That's very important. I would say, communication is the, is the first, the first thing we need to go for. We need to have an intense communication to resolve any issue.
Thank you, Mr. Wu.
It's my understanding that we had a task force already that just sort of came and went. It, how we, it has to be a form of community. I agree that there should be, that there needs to be communication. We are both, neither Mount SAC nor the City of Walnut can afford to continue to sue each other. It's bad, it's really bad for both groups. We, we need to have people that have an appreciation for Mount SAC and an appreciation for the City of Walnut, working together and understanding what it is that we're doing. I think at this point, there's a lot of disrespect on both sides. And the only way that we can move forward is that if we keep our discourse civil. It's gotten very nasty. And I'm in a unique position of having a good relationship with Dr. Scruggins and Mount SAC, and with the City of Walnut, and also with Gary Chow on the board, and I believe he will be re-elected. I think we can work together in more of an informal setting, and just keep our communication open informally, so we all know what's going on.
Thank you. This goes to you, Ms. Mason. What are your top three priorities if elected to the City Council?
Well, I already said, but I'll say, I'll say it again. In terms of public safety, add cameras where the Sheriff's Department recommends it. In terms of traffic, hold RKK, or RKK, what's that, engineer accountable, so that they time our lights, right? And the last one is to, we have, we have certain property values in Walnut, and we have a certain look of Walnut. And cities like Laguna Beach and Torrance have enacted a view protection ordinances that have stood the test of lawsuits. Places that have views worth protecting have enacted these view protection ordinances. They're very low cost to the cities, like getting a ticket on your, you know, if you got, if your lawn was overgrown. It's not something that the city would be paying for. It's to solve disputes between neighbors. And if you are lucky enough to have awesome neighbors, then, then that's fantastic. But not everybody is that lucky. And it just gives people a chance for arbitration outside of, you know, trying to work things out similarly.
Thank you, Ms. Mason. Mr. Wu?
My top three, the first one is the Public Safety. Like I say, we, we need to improve the Public Safety issue, burglary, robbery, and all kinds of crime. But how? We need to have, we need to have someone on the City Council can do the work and can, can look into how to resolve the problem. The second one would be the balance the budget in the future. I mean, how, how we're going to get more money, revenue, and how we're going to save money? We can save money from different ways. We can save money for the legal fee, and some other, some other money like water, and some other expense. The third one actually covers everything, it's contract. We are contract C, we contract everything out, we need to look at. What kind of contract? What kind of service we get? Because every day, we're talking about money is not enough. We need to, we need to, we need to balance the budget, but what about our contract? Can, did you see the street? The main hall, almost 80%, 70%, the main hall, there are more than one inch elevation difference. When you drive in the car, you try to dodge it. Try not to, try not to, try not to dodge, right?
Thank you, Mr. Wu.
Yeah, that's, that's probably works. I mean, who, who, who did the design?
Thank you, Mr. Wu.
Engineering head did the design. Who did it, who everything?
Thank you. Mr. Wu? Do you think it's time for a change in city administration?
Mr. Wu, ten second? I think through, yes. But I'm not, I'm not for the 100% change, we can gradually, gradually change. We still can do better. We still need to, we need. We still need have, we need have, we need to have someone more professional, know how to do the work, how to do the job, and welding volunteer to on the city council to make our city better. When you driving on the street, you not feeling like you are, you are in the third country, a third world country. When you look at your, your public infrastructure, we are part, we are United States. And same thing, the burglary and robbery. I mean, everybody talking about this, this problem. Why can't we do something? Thank you.
Thank you. Do you think we need change in the city's administration?
Oh, yeah, I remember the question. Okay. I think we need to hold our city manager accountable. Just like we need to hold the people we hire accountable for, you know, Dr. Wu said, we need to hold our, the people we hire to contract our city services accountable. I one hundred percent agree. And we're looking at sustainability. And we have a private citizens group looking at how we can be sustainable. We should also be looking at how our, how, how our city is financed, and how many positions we have in leadership. We have one city manager, two assistant city managers. The city of Diamond Bar has one city manager and one assistant city manager. You know, we need to look into this. And, and I also, I want to stress also that that can only happen with a public safety commission and a, or, and public sustainability commission. We need these public commissions. We need these community-led commissions to make it happen.
Thank you. Many cities have implemented free public Wi-Fi to support commerce and residence. Do you support partnerships with private sector to build free Wi-Fi in public spaces in the city of Walnut?
This is news to me, I'd have to look into it.
This one is not new to me. City of Sarito, they did that a long time ago, probably ten years ago. But I would say, I'm kind of okay with that. But the thing is the safety issue, the hacking and the data safety. Because when, my fifteen years in water district, a water board, the privacy is very important. I mean, we try very, very hard to protect the users' data, the users' information. So I would say, the privacy and the data safety is the number one concern. I'm not against it. But if these two problem can resolve it, I, I, I probably, I, I need to have a, I mean, if, if people, they are, they are, we are, communication. Yeah, communication is very important. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wu, do you support building more housing, specifically mixed-use housing that's already allowed in the master plan along Emar Grand, Valley Boulevard, and Villalobos and Amar?
Well, like I say, the, we have, we have pioneer generation, the mid-age generation, and, and the young next generation, the new generation. Different generation, their core values different. They look at the thing different way. I understand that. I'm the person, I can, I, I, I can try to, because I used to work for, not work for, work with Tom King, Tom Size, Kevasanta, and, and also Joaquin Lim, and right now, the city council, and also, and also the young city council, not young, you know, we have a new city council, Andrew. And my, my home, I have three young generation. I'm, I'm okay with that, because the, it's in the boundary of the our city. Like I say, it's not going to happen next ten year or fifteen years. I asked the property owner, some of the garage, say, did you guys know usually already been changed? They say, I knew that, but I'm not going to do anything until next fifteen years. Next fifteen years, when I, when I retire, maybe I'll think about it. So why not the change right now? It's not going to have impact in medium.
Thank you, Ms. Wu. Ms. Mason?
Medium density is the kind of development that we saw, that we see on Pierre and Valley. And that kind of development has its toll on our roads. And I'm not saying that anybody who moves in will be a criminal, but there is a correlation between the number of people and the, and crime going up. If we have the infrastructure to support this kind of development, I'd be open to it. But not until the infrastructure is there first. If we don't have the infrastructure, we're looking at the kind of congestion that makes our quality of life decrease. It brings down our quality of life. I don't think that's a generational thing. I think that's just, you know, people don't like to sit in traffic. When you add new people to the city, they're going to want to use our city services, too. That's going to increase our cost of city services. I think before we look at getting development money and the one-time developer fees, we need to look at how we're going to be sustainable with what we have. And then, maybe, that might be the direction we want to go in. But infrastructure first.
Thank you. The city of Walnut is running at a deficit every year. What do you propose to help address the deficit? Ms. Mason?
You mentioned that city Walnut is a contract city. And I do believe that we need to save money on our, by setting contracts out to bid, be more aggressive about that. Also, our spending. Right now, we're currently spending a lot of money on water. And water, I think Dr. Wu can speak to this, too. Water prices are going to be increasing greatly. We, we appreciate a certain look of Walnut, and we want to keep that beautiful look. But we can't keep on paying for water. It's like spending money, it's like throwing it away. We can't keep on watering plants that are English garden variety. The city of Walnut has already started planting drought tolerant and California native plants. As our plants die off, let's replace them with these plants that are beautiful. A lot of people think the California native plants are ugly. If you look really hard, I bet you can find a few really ugly ones. But most of them, they're not cactus, they're not necessarily sexpans. Some people like to look at cactus, but there are a lot of beautiful California native plants. And we may want to, we want to be open to the discussion of living in a more sustainable world.
The city of Walnut is running at a deficit every year. If elected to the city council, what would you do to help address the deficit?
The deficit, I, well, there's two way. Revenue, increase the revenue, and decrease the expenditure. That's the two way. I did some calculation. We have nine thousand half unit, resident unit here, city of Walnut. And the property tax, compared to us, is somewhere around six to seven million dollars, which mean average each house is seven hundred, six fifty dollar to seven hundred dollar income to the city average. So in order to build more house, we probably need to know, we need to know the builder, how much the cost they are building the house, how much profit they are making the house up before they just run away. So one time, you know, developing fee is, to me, it's a one-time income only. But the, the property tax, we probably not going to get a lot, even though we have, only, only if we build something like, like a thousands houses here. We're not. For the, saving the money, I already mentioned that. We need to, we need to try to look into each contract, see where the money we spending.
Thank you, Mr. Wu. I want to thank the audience for all their great questions. Now we will go ahead and have our closing remarks, so we'll start with Ms. Mason's thing.
A lot of the questions were about our, our budget and our deficits that are coming up. Please get the word out through Walnut Buzz or whatever, how important this conversation is, so people know that Walnut is not a rich city. We need to create a Walnut, a future that is sustainable, safe, and beautiful with transparent government led by, with a citizens, safety, and economic stability commission. I do not have the same kinds of backgrounds that our politicians typically have. Andrew Rodriguez also didn't. And I think people would agree that he is invested in our city. And when he agree with all the decisions he's made, we know he's got our interest first. Mine is also, I, I also agree. Residents first every day. So please shop in Walnut, support Next Gen's and Andrew's. Night out tomorrow at the Twenty Fourth Center from six to ten.
Thank you, Mr. Wu.
I, I'm running for this position because I believe my experience and my education, and also my life experience, I wanted to help our city, to make our city better and better. It doesn't matter public safety, doesn't matter the transportation, doesn't matter the, your community service, and engineering, and development. I, I have my fifteen years experience in the water district. I make the water district become the most transparency, most responsible, and the most efficient agents. So I would, I would say, if you can vote for me, I will do a good job on the city council. And let's make it better, make it change. And you will vote to make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you all for joining us tonight. I think we'll have a few closing remarks from our organizers, but thank you for taking the time to be here to listen to the issues from the candidates. And remember to vote on November sixth, or if you have your railgun, make sure you send it in, and encourage your neighborship vote. Thank you.
And of course, we want to thank our candidate, as well as Nancy and Roy, for coming out to water this forum. They did a great job, and I think we got a lot of our questions in. And I hope this, these both sessions will give you a lot more information about each of the candidates and to help you make an informed decision. And I also want to thank our volunteer's organization and our volunteers for helping the facility collect questions tonight. And thank you all for coming. We are going to start clearing the hall, so you can, you won't have to stay and have Anthony after, but we ask you to start moving towards outside the facility so we can get this place cleaned up. Thank you very much. Have a good night.